...to make sure this project's gonna move forward with no hiccups and that all things are resolved. And for you to come here with the 20-pound thing and drop it and say it's in here, that does us a disservice and it does our citizens a disservice. All we're asking for, if you're the point person there, if you're not, you need to make sure that the point person for this development is here, representing either the city and/or the development to have a conversation, to make sure that the same thing you brought to us with an emergency resolution, to spend $285,000 for water, that that does not happen moving forward. So, how do we resolve this? Are we saying that, you said Bureau Veritas will be here at the next meeting? If we move this for agenda item to the next meeting, Bureau Veritas should be able to go through items one through 50 and walk us through this process. Is that correct?
No. Because you don't know how the process works. What happens is you have several inspectors with several different specialties. Ms. Rogers is our primary person over the area. She's training another gentleman named Chris who just needs his plumbing thing that says it takes another eight or nine months. You know, well, all I'm saying, guys, is it's okay for you to know, but this is how you choose to find out. This is how you choose to find out. You say, "I could've provided you information before the meeting." You could've asked for information before the meeting on one-on-one, and I would've told you the same thing I'm telling you here. I didn't set up this process. You did. You were on the council when they were brought in four years ago, and you're just finding out how they work. And maybe that's a part of it. Hold on, Councilman Rowland, I did not interrupt you.
I don't want you to spread...
No, but what I'm saying is, this is how it works. When you have a project, there's a lot of things that can be done that are not life-safety issues that can go forward because they've been checked off. The whole plan had not been, but they allow you to go forward. But again, it's, if you want to understand the process, some of it's in our ordinances. It'll tell you, as the city's building official, there are things, unless I appoint someone else to do that, that I can authorize. And because I was in touch with Mary Fowler and Joe in Dallas, and meeting with Ms. Rogers here, they're the ones that I count on to handle this stuff. And they tell me what can and can't go forward, and that's what has been taking place. It's just understanding the process. But you want to do it at a council meeting and say you don't have information, and this is the only time you're asking for the information. I'm not telling you anything I haven't told you. In my mayor's report, you have been seeing this project for the six or so months that it's been taking place. I talked to you about this project in my mayor's report before they even dug a piece of dirt over there. And in waiting on this to come up, I let you know it was coming. I let you know it was here, and I let you know the first two buildings were approved just not seven days ago. I'm not sure what you want. But whatever it is you want, you got access to. My reports are all on the internet. Yes, sir.
Okay, and Council, can you please just let me know if this is what happened or not? I know our last council meeting, we talked about Bureau Veritas approving different things. At one point, they said that Bureau Veritas approved the foundation. But then, next thing you know, the structure was going up, even though Bureau Veritas hasn't approved on anything else except for the foundation. So, I don't want this to become a personal battle. I want this, because there's gonna be more structure that will be built in the city as we continue forward economic development. And we just want to make sure that, you know, the processes are laid out, whatever the processes may be, the processes are laid out, that, you know, if someone approves of something, that the developer just doesn't keep going for it when it's not been approved. Because at the end of the day, we have citizens to look over, and we have information that we need to communicate. And without that, without a level of accountability, the cities are always gonna come to these issues over and over here.
Let me tell you what happens. Let's say they put up the sprinkler system. I told you a little while ago, and maybe you didn't catch this. If they don't have the necessary pressure for the sprinklers, Chief, it doesn't pass, it doesn't open. Correct?
I'm on mine.
Okay, again, it's, all of this is in our city ordinance, folks. How things go, if they built a piece of it, and Bureau Veritas said that was against the international code that we follow, guess what? They have to tear it down, rebuild it. That's how things work, folks. That's how things work. This is not rocket science. There's a check and balance that's built in, and all you have to do is take a look at, understand it. And there's nothing secretive about it, and nothing you've asked that I have not tried to answer for six months now. Yes, sir.
All right, so, listen, Mayor, what about the emails when we had asked upon for certain things, like to see how, because I know I even asked at one point in time, even with Attorney Current, about how the actual process works. I never got any kind of response from it, maybe you saw, you know, courts doing several things. But how do I know how to find that information? Like earlier, I was joking when I said, "Teach me." But if I ask a question, if a student asks a question, and teachers don't validate this question or give them an answer upon that, and then continue to move on, then that student is gonna stay stuck where he's at because he continues to ask the same question because he can't move on without an answer to that question. I kind of feel like we're all stuck at the same point. It's not a personal thing against you. It's just like, all right, cool, like we got the project going. At the end of the day, like, what's the, you say Bureau Veritas signed off on something. Well, some things that we have seen, they have signed off on. Certain things, and then other things continue to go on. So, to us, that don't look like a clear process. If you say, "Oh, Bureau Veritas has to sign off on it," and then much later, we go outside and it's done. Well, I thought Bureau Veritas had to sign off upon, like, certain points for you to go to step B to step C. So, I do apologize if it seemed like we attacked you. I think we all elected to move the city forward and see the city develop of some sort, so you don't have to insult us upon the project. But I do feel it's like you've been the head of us and representing this ship. Then if someone asks a question upon a project, it would kind of help us all out and not get to this point if we was provided with the information.
It's like the zoning application packet. Some of you are seeing this packet for the first time today. All of you, except Councilman Wallace, have been up here for well over 12 months. Going on six years, going on eight years. This packet is standard operating procedure up front. And we went through earlier a lot of how does it work. I'm gonna apologize in advance, but I did tell you all I haven't slept since 7 o'clock yesterday morning. But if you want the information, get the information, read it, and if you have questions, myself, Chief, Ms. Dickey, Attorney Kerwin, hold on, hold on. I'm trying to tell you, when I was sitting in that audience, I read the city ordinances long before I thought about becoming mayor. I challenge that most of you have not taken that time. Because what you're looking at, one of the forms that you're speaking of, is a form that we use that says Public Works signed off and a couple of other folks, right? If you read the process, the permit fee says Bureau Veritas does those different things that you're looking for a signature on, this is their signature. They don't sign that outdated form that I inherited. We're working with the form. I sign under Public Works because I'm the Public Works supervisor, so we could not have and spend that extra money. But when you ask for stuff that you already have access to, that's the stuff that at some point gets a little irritating because you say you're elected officials like me, but you don't want to read the stuff I have to read. Well, I'm acting on the authority I have. You all have authority, but you don't take the time to get the information to see what your authority is, what your responsibilities are. You keep asking me for stuff you should have. As you said, we're all equally elected. So, at some point, don't tell me I'm leading the ship, and you're a leader too. Act like you, get the information.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, you can see my agenda item, I do dare to read, which is where my question came from, upon the signature sheet. Upon, it says both names on there for a reason. So, I asked you, does both names have to sign off? Because if I read and it says both names and there's only one signature on there, then that's telling me that obviously something went wrong. So, when I bring, so, let's stop insulting one another upon this process because, as you say, it gets very irritating. And, I mean, you're a well-mature man than I am. So, if someone asks for clarity, all we doing is asking for clarity. We not trying to insult you. So, if I see, if I see your name on there and I see my name, and you're, and you're the only one that signed it, then somebody else gonna bring a sheet back to me and say, "Oh, Kendrick, you didn't sign this." It's not gonna say, "Oh, the mayor signed it, so we good." No, it's gonna say, "Oh, well, let me go to Kendrick and get that signature as well." And the information that's provided to us and that I go seek to read, as you can see, I definitely read with the agenda item from there. Then we have to go about and ask to try to, try to help. I think sometimes we get into a tendency of competing with one another. You feeling like, "Oh, we trying to compete with you," or overstep. We not trying to do that. At the end of the day, hey, shout out to you, I'm glad for everything that you've done and continue to do. But at the end of the day, we gotta kind of help one another and not let one another fall by the wayside. So, it's been several things that, like, has happened to myself that you go about and just talk about instead of being the mayor and helping me about that or helping me move past a certain point. So, when we talk about helping one another, we all sit upon, Council, yeah, we all elected. But let's take the time out to help the teach of a person to seek your information, then provide him with the information, say, "Well, Kendrick, look, I see that you asked here. It says such and such, go read that." I'll go happily read it and bring back the information and try to challenge.
We've been having the same dialogue for six months.
So, we don't have the information.
I'm telling you tonight, the same thing I've been telling you. I told you the Bureau Veritas process, fine, you don't believe me, go read it. You want to know the permit application process? They're at the front desk. We're discussing the zoning stuff because people come up asking about zones, and it's not clear what the zoning is. But let me, let me, let me help with this. Because you asked Councilman Rowland about water sewer pressure. If you check item H on the city's charter, it says City Council, not mayor, is responsible for water and sewer. So, instead of you asking me, I should ask you, what have you done? Because that's a specific designated responsibility per our city charter to City Council. And all you've done is asked me what I've done. I'd like to know what have you done lately.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I think what Councilman Jones and Councilman Randall have communicated tonight. We are all in this together. We've asked for some specific things. When we talk about, I have an email that I sent to you. We talked about communication and asked my question at City Council meeting. I've asked you these several things in an email that I have printed that I sent to you about the city engineer, David Line Decker, who didn't sign off on this project until May, and then he gave some conditional things that may or may not be done correctly currently today. Does that mean the project needs to stop? No. But we're asking that if all of our checks and balances, Bureau Veritas, the city engineer, the fire department, and Public Works, that if they're all supposed to have a common conversation along with USW, has that conversation been had? And we found out last meeting that it hadn't happened.
What hadn't happened?
That the conversation, that all these entities hadn't been connected together to move forward this process until when we had this major emergency at Brookside. That's when we found this out. And we're saying that since the responsibility is City Council, we do not want to not take care of our responsibilities. So, the question is, I wrote you an email about doing a cease and desist on Panther Hill Apartments only until we have all the documentation and all the information about this particular development. And so, that's our right. I'm not saying we need to do that, but I'm saying that's City Council's right until we have the information on the water pressure and all of the specific things we're asking for. Now, you said Bureau Veritas, who signed off on, you know, there has to be a foundation, there have to be plumbing, electrical, all these things. And we're saying, you're saying, you're breaking this development up, saying just this building. City Council's not looking at buildings. We're looking at the whole development. And so, when we talk about things, we're talking about the whole development, not building by building. And we want to talk about how it impacts all of the citizens as far as on the water and sewer and pressure specifically in that area, like you had about the emergency with Brookside. And so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that this be moved to our next agenda item. And if we don't have the proper information, that we request a cease and desist to be sent out by the city attorney. Now, the reason why, I'm getting ready to say that. The reason why I'm asking is we've asked the meeting before that all these people be here to be able to tell us that, to show us. You had five things that need to be signed off on. They were signed off on this, this, and this, and y'all are good to go. We want to know that, how is it gonna impact the water pressure on that street? How many water hydrants? All the relevant information. I don't want to see no rolled-up thing because that was just signed off in May. We've been asking about this since December.
Signed off in April.
And April 20-something. I have a letter to you, April, April 20-something, that, that says, "Asking all these same questions," that you said you denied.
And I responded to it.
But what I'm saying is, simply, Council just wants to know that we're not gonna be put on the hook like you just said in front of all the citizens. That Council was responsible for making that the city had, the citizens had water and sewer and were not negatively impacted for this development. You just said that. And so, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we have whoever's responsible come before us and say, "Listen, these one through 10 has been done. Here it is." And, and so, are you gonna, if you're gonna be that person, we can roll out the map and do that right now. If you're not, they need to be at our next meeting because if not, we need to issue a cease and desist until we know that it's not, that there's not gonna be, this development is not gonna negatively impact the citizens of our community.
I like the way you say, on one hand, you don't want to interfere with the project. And that's at least the fourth time you've mentioned cease and desist. You can't have it both ways. It's obvious what's on your mind. But you just don't do a cease and desist without valid rationale and authority. It's a private development. You are not required, you cannot require them to come stand before you. And with the way you've been talking, that, I'm glad they're not here. But I told you earlier, Ms. Fowler with Bureau Veritas said she could be at the next meeting, and you're harping for the last 40 minutes on the same point that we said was gonna be covered. We told you the city engineer, we just received his resignation or lack of requesting renewal of the contract today. I mean, it's like you're not listening to this stuff because you're so focused on some alleged cease and desist that, to my knowledge, you have no authority to do. We're moving the agenda.
You can't move the agenda. He can't do that. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
We spent enough time, it's been elaborated.
Mr. Mayor, you can't, you can't move the agenda. It's ours. It's ours. You can't move the agenda. That's the, that's the point. You gotta, that's why we're trying to work with you, but you know, this is, this is...
What else do you have to say on this topic?
On this topic, I move that we move this agenda item to our May 9th, our July 9th City Council meeting with all the same parties that's been designated on the agenda to provide...
Your city engineer has resigned.
...to lead David Line Decker.
Right, that's even more why we need to...
He will not be, he will not come to the meeting.
Correct.
I mean, I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
I mean, the motion, but, okay, go ahead. You gonna finish your motion?
I move that we move this agenda item to July's 9th City Council meeting to address Panther Hill Apartment Complex with Bureau Veritas, a city engineer, and the developer Apartment Hills complex. And, and if this information is not addressed at the July 9th meeting, that the City Council issue a cease and desist until we have all information for this development that will not negatively impact the citizens of the city of Prairie View.
Compound motion, Council. You had to note that it's issued separately, apartment entry procedures, pretty basic. I didn't see the compound. Well, you're designating them here, and if they don't come, that's step two. Yes, it is. It's an either-or. It's a compound motion.
We have never had a compound motion objection raised since I have been here.
That's correct. And that's because as they've come up, they have not been carried.
Call for a question, please.
Now that there is a compound motion objection, would you address it?
So, my, my motion was the same item as number four. And if those members who were taking this information, who has the answers, don't come to our July 9th meeting and give us all the information we need, we're gonna issue a cease and desist that night. So, we're asking them to come before us and provide us the information that does not gonna negatively impact the citizens of this community. So, we giving them an opportunity, and if we don't get all the information that we need, then we're gonna issue a cease and desist. And that was also seconded.
Part of the problem is we know one of the parties will, will not be here.
That's a model ready.
So...
We take David Line...
Because David Line Decker is resigning tonight. We have a letter of resignation. He will finish the EDA grant only, and he will finish no other work. That was his, so...
Councilman Jones has a unreadiness on motion.
Well, so Attorney Current, that, that even leaves us more...
Correct.
To like be somewhat blindsided by something because, like, I don't know...
His resignation came in this evening at...
I believe.
I'll tell you what time it came in.
Point of, point of order. We gotta, we gotta carry the motion before we can have one ready.
We could, I will accept the amendment to move to, to strike David Line Decker's name. But at the end of the day, we gonna need a city engineer. So, again, I would, I would, I said the same items as number four. If you want to put whoever is gonna fill in for that place, whoever that is. But we need questions from Panther Hill Development, developers who've known some of this information because it is a private development of like the water pressure. We need Bureau Veritas, who is, works for the city and should have been updating us on this project. And so, I don't know, again, if the information is going to the mayor or whoever. So, that's part of what we're wanting. We wanting dates and, dates of when this has been done and if all items are checked off and we're ready to go. So, we now can communicate to every citizen who says, "Hey, what's going on with Panther Hill? And are we 50% ready or are we 100?" And we can walk out that meeting and say, "We're 100% ready to move forward." That's all we asking. So, if you want to take David Line Decker's name off, that's fine. But this is, the reason why I made the motion is just as strong as, how does your city engineer quit in the middle of the game? There's a reason for that. The same one who didn't want to sign off on the same document for the same project. So, again, that's why I'm asking for it. Regardless, reducing, you could redact his name, but I, I think we still need to move forward in the process.
And I don't know if you will have a city engineer by the next meeting.
We can't have one without Council approval. So, and the Council don't meet before the next meeting.
So, I say tag off the city engineer's name. So, all the other names are separate, minus city engineer.
So, what if you, let me, let me make a recommendation. Tell me if the Council likes this notion. You want the same motion of number four, correct? Except we remove the city engineer.
Correct.
Okay. And what if you had a separate, a separate motion that, after that, that says, "Consider and take action if necessary to issue any cease and desist order based on item number four."
I want it in the same one. Because we, we could do, so, so what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, you know that we don't need a motion to do a cease and desist. We can use number one to do a cease and desist, like we could've did it tonight. What I'm saying is, I want, again, for the people who would think this is a negative thing, if all this documentation has been done for the last six or seven months, it should be easy to have it ready for us in two weeks. And if it is not, then everyone knows the consequences of this being a timeout being called until we get everything we need. And so, again, this is not against one person, one entity. All I'm saying is that we need to have all doc... If this has been going on for seven months, we should easily be able to get all the information and walk us through the process. Hey, we did the, the, uh, foundation inspection on this date. We needed to sign on these 10 things. We did that. Boom. Let's go to number two. And, and then, then we get down to the impact of what we just had an emergency meeting about, about the water pressure and about the sewer lines that we're gonna have to address for this particular property, project. That, that again, that's flowing up and all these other things that we haven't talked about that are, that will negatively impact the community. And so, again, for people who are trying to make this about the development or anything, it's not about that. It's about if every, of all the Ts across, it should be very easy to walk us through this project, very simple, and we move on. Everybody leaves here knowing 100% that we're ready to go.
And you wonder why people don't want to admit the development in burly. I've got an unreadiness because addressing the motion as to whether or not it's compound or not is my job.
I withdraw the cease and desist. We can do, we can do a, we can do a cease and desist without having it on there. I withdraw it. I just want the first part of the motion to be. That's fine.
Acceptance from the amendment. Counsel, are we good? You got an unreadiness, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, you got it.
Hold on, I've got an unreadiness. What authority and rationale do we have, number one, to issue a cease and desist without justification?
We took that off.
No, no, hold on. I'm, I'm asking because this is a part of discussion. This is when you ask. The motion's on the floor. No, no, you were looking to discuss it before.
The motion is already dissected. You gotta call, you gotta call for the question.
Now, you go to discussion.
After you called for the question.
All these folks have been talking, and this is just not coming out.
I said it first.
Hold on. The, a part of the motion is requiring a private developer to come before you or you're gonna try to shut them down. Sounds more like a threat to me, and it's recorded, and we're a public entity. What right do we have to make a private developer on a private project who hasn't asked us for a dime or tax debatements or anything? How can we require them to come here or we're gonna shut you down? Because it's public record now.
I just said require.
It's, it's public record now.
Number four doesn't say anything by require.
No. What you said is a threat, Councilman Rowland. And I want it addressed because this is public, and I'm not getting in trouble for you or anybody else.
Can you call for a question?
Yes, sir.
I've got, my unreadiness hasn't been addressed.
Call for a question.
Counsel?
Will you call for a question?
It's on the legality of this. Do you want, do you want to go to executive session? Or you want to deal with it?
Yeah, call for a question.
Can we require without rationale?
Well, the only way you can go into executive session is you can move executive session for attorney-client under 551071. Or I can just answer the question.
Answer it. Public has a right to hear. There's nothing secretive about this.
You cannot require, there's nothing that I know of that you can require anyone to attend your meetings. You can certainly ask them to come. If you want to issue any cease and desist, you need to have a reason to issue a cease and desist if they have failed inspections, they have not provided the plans, or something like that.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And let the record show, it was mutual for, okay. But you also have Council's legal advice in the process. Discuss, consider, and take action to adopt an ordinance requiring rental registration in the city for any landlord slash owner renting property.
Mr. Mayor, can you, can the city secretary read what the, what the motion was? Because I don't want citizens to leave here confused.
Discuss, consider, and take action Panther Hills Apartment Complex with Bureau's Veritas, city engineer, striking David Line Decker, and developer of Panther Hills Apartment Complex.
Thank you.
Item five. The rationale for this, and hopefully we won't spend a lot of time on it. But in going into some of the student housing that has been taking place, some people have bought some property, and when they went in, I went in with them. And we have some housing that has been going on here that students live in that's just horrific. And I found out at one of the trainings that some cities have basically, if you're gonna be renting in the city, it's basically a business. So, you at least register with them, akin to getting a permit. But it also allows us to be able to inspect them because the students and their parents are counting on us to provide at least housing that is reasonably livable in. And that's a part of what this is about. If you have it in your hands, we can easily discuss it another time. I'm certainly not asking for any, any action on it, but I wanted to bring... But I wanted to bring it in front of you, which is my job per our charter and which is what I've always tried to do. So, you have that and we can review it and take a look and discuss it at another time, if that'd be okay with counsel.
Is this just for, is this just for review?
Yes.
This is just a sample one, this is from Missouri, this is one that was taken from Missouri City. Um, it's been in place since about two thousand and six.
And you sent us, uh, links to some other things. So, the email that council, that I asked council to send out to you has some more information. Yes, Councilman Randall?
Uh, just real quick, touch on, on the ordinance. I think, I think it is important to, to set some standards about how, um, we're, we're, we're allowing people to rent to our students. I was gonna be talking about the home over there, Epples, that was, uh, that was pretty deplorable. And, uh, I appreciate you and city attorney going through steps to give us this information. And I think it's definitely important to, um, create standards so that, um, the quality of, not even not just students, anybody who's rented in the city to have, to be able to live under a certain, a certain standard.
Thank you, sir. Was there someone else who had a comment on this, Councilman Jones?
Uh, I move that we discuss and take action on this ordinance, uh, at the July ninth meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved that we discuss and, and take actions on item number five, the ordinance at the July fifth ninth meeting?
Yes, sir.
You heard the motion? Well, heard the motion, ready for the question?
Everyone ready?
Um, the, oh, you said Missouri City. Did we, um, so you, you weren't, um, so when I look back, you didn't look at any, um, cities that had universities, college towns?
I did.
You did?
I looked at College Station, it's fairly identical to this.
College Station, who?
City of Commerce Station.
Okay.
And I looked at that because they did have, um, a university. And it's, it's almost word for word, this is from Missouri City.
Any concerns? Item six. Oh, all of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Item six, discuss, consider and take action regarding fire services in the city, including but not limited to inspection, reviews and new work regarding or related to fire issues in the city. Uh, it was tabled and carried forward, it was my agenda item, and I'm gonna request that we do the same. Um, you heard me and Assistant Chief Cordell saying he has some information being reviewed by the fire chief. And we'll be getting together on who and how. The reason this was on here is because it hadn't been taken place and this is just an action uh, to keep you informed on the fact that we're moving forward to correct that. Councilman?
When you say do the same, you mean table it to the next meeting?
Yes, sir. Councilman Randall?
I move that we just, we table item number six, discuss and, discuss, consider and take action regarding fire services in the city but, but not limited to inspection, reviews, any work regarding or related to fire issues in the city until the, the June ninth, uh, July ninth city council meeting?
Sir. It's been properly moved and seconded that we, uh, discuss, consider and take action on moving item number six to the July ninth.